All right, we'll go ahead and get this work session started. This is the Cortez City Council Work Session. Today's Tuesday, September 27, 2022, and the time is 5:45 PM. So we'll call this meeting to order, and we'll start with Agenda Item A, the Presentation of the Award for the National Association of Preservation Commissions to the Cortez Historic Preservation Board. Lynda Toll? Or Rachel?
Greetings, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'd like to present to you an award that the Historical Preservation Board received, and I'll give you a little bit of information about that. The Cortez Historical Preservation Board received an NA PC Commission Excellence Award. Cortez Historic Preservation Board received a Commission Excellence Award for Best Practices in Identification and Registration from the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions. The awards program was established to recognize and honor outstanding efforts and achievements by local preservation commissions as well as individual preservationists doing exemplary work at the federal, state, and municipal levels. The Cortez Historical Preservation Board has proven that preservation boards in small towns with no preservation staff and limited budgets can still accomplish a great deal. With the help of grants, the Cortez Historic Preservation Board started inventorying historic properties on First and Second Streets within the original town site. The project was later expanded to include all pre-1974 structures and 17 high-priority auto-tourism resources. Through their work, the Town of Cortez has engaged the community, highlighted the breadth of history and cultural resources the town offers, and laid the groundwork for continued preservation planning and public education. And with that, I'll bring out the award, and maybe we can give them a little round of applause.
Thank you, Lynda. I was just going to suggest we bring the council down.
And we're not quite finished yet. You guys can sit back, but Lynda wanted to give you just a little update on the auto-tourism properties, just real quick.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Lynda Toll. I'm chairman of the Cortez Historic Preservation Board, and council has some information in their packet tonight about the work we've done over the past 10 years or so to inventory properties here in the city. Last year, the city received a grant that allowed us to do a windshield survey of every single property within the city limits. We hired Woods Canyon Archaeological Consultants, who in turn contracted with Jennifer Wallers, an architectural historian. In about four days, she drove throughout the city with GIS information on her tablet and determined that about 900 properties within the city limits are more than 50 years old and that retain historic integrity. They could potentially be registered as historic properties for the city. As a result of that grant, she prioritized properties that should be inventoried sooner rather than later. Some of the properties that are potentially going to be inventoried are even residential developments like the Urteil Development and Kemper. So some of us remember the 1950s and 60s, but not everybody does. So the first, the highest priority from her survey plan was to look at what was then 18 auto-tourism properties. The 1950s, of course, post-World War II baby boom, a lot of people now owned cars. They wanted to travel for family vacations to places like Mesa Verde, and so, of course, they had to have a place to stay. So motels, sort of motor hotels, were developed where you could park your car right at your front door. So that, of course, required more gas stations and some restaurants. So if you can see up there on the screen, I'm just going to run quickly through the properties that we are in the process of inventorying this year. The Retro Inn has already, of course, made the most of their history, and a lot of people stay there because they want an older property. The Aneth Lodge is one of our properties. I noticed there's a new sign across the top that says Mesa something, so you all probably know more about that than I do. But the Aneth sign, that you can't see very well in this picture, is on the city's register of historic signs. We have four. The Turquoise Inn, of course, has been here for a long time. Several properties down on Broadway are included, the Cozy Inn and the Sleeping Yew Motel. Days Inn is older than I would have thought. The American Holiday Inn, that used to be the Anasazi, is included here, although I understand that it is going to be repurposed for apartments, but that really shouldn't change the architectural integrity and, of course, its history. Oops, okay. I hate touchscreen, just so you know. There we go. The Tomahawk Motel sign is also listed on our register of historic signs, and in their, on their marquee, they already say they're a historic motel, so hopefully we can prove that. The White Eagle Motel is also down on Broadway. I'm used to a mouse. Okay. There's more. Okay, the former roadway inn, and there's a Quality Inn behind it now. I'm not quite sure how that all works. And gas stations. Now, when Jen did her survey last summer, Sunshine Motors was still there. Within a month, it was gone, and you know that Ziggy's is there now. This highlights why she thought these properties on Main Street, Broadway, and, of course, Highway 160 are so important to get inventoried. They are prime real estate, and it's very possible that some of the rest of these will be sold off for something other than, than the building's demolished. So if we can at least record their history, if that does happen, then we will at least know what was there. So you can see the Speedway gas station still retains its original architecture, a couple of gas stations down on Broadway, some of which are still in use, and then, of course, two restaurants, Burger Boy. I remember when they celebrated their 50th anniversary a few years back, and the Yew Cafe. So those are the 17 properties. We will general common research their history. If anyone has stories or pictures from the earlier days at these properties, we would love to see them. You can get in touch with her through me. And by spring, we should have a report, and we will come back and make a presentation. The property owners will be given an opportunity to list their property on the city register. It is completely at the property owner's discretion. We, as a board, you as a council, we cannot designate properties. The owner has to want to do it, so we'll give them all a chance, and we'll see what comes out of this. Maybe down the road, we'll have a driving brochure where we could encourage our visitors to check out these motels, hopefully stay in them, go to Burger Boy for lunch, things like that. So this isn't just about preservation, but about heritage tourism and the fact that we have a lot of properties here in Cortez that have a great story to tell and that we should market and encourage our visitors to find out more. So are there any questions? Great, thank you. You're in charge of this.
Well, thank you so much, Lynda. That's, you've been doing great work around this community, and it's cool to learn about the history of Cortez and just how everything came to be, so thank you. All right, so we'll move on then to presentations by department heads. This is Item B on our agenda. We'll start with our Human Resources Director, Matt Kashner.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I just want to start with, in, I'm going to go back to April. We always have a health and safety fair, and we had 87 employees attend the fair. That whole week is kind of geared towards employee training. So that week, we had three days of training total with Public Works, Parks and Rec, Kinnell Employees, and then some other training later on I'll talk about. Those trainings included bloodborne pathogens, safe driving strategies, hazardous operations, including lockout-tagout, confined space, excavating, entrenching, and chemical safety. We also had two classes put on by Sam Light, who I think you guys met, and these classes were for anyone that wanted to attend, and that was called Managing Effectively and Reducing Risks. Our USI is our insurance broker, and Dan Clark presented a class while he was here on Medicare, and that was pretty well attended. An update on hiring. We have hired 100 employees year-to-date. That includes lifeguards, seasonal employees, part-time and full-time. Out of those numbers, 25 lifeguards, 23 full-time employees, 52 part-time and seasonal employees. We've had 51 terminations so far this year, and that's everything from retiring to leaving voluntarily. 15 promotions, and when I say promotion, I don't necessarily mean like to a supervisory role, but we've had, you know, some part-time employees that were promoted to full-time. And currently, I'm proud to say that we only have four time, four full-time jobs open right now, so we just, it's been like a flurry of hiring this year. We had our CERCA audit was just completed, and the purpose of that is for safety and compliance and toward, and also to get good scores, which helps out on our premiums. They inspect facilities and make recommendations, and then we, as the departments, try to put those recommendations into action, and so we get a better reading next time they come back. And we're still working on those, so. They inspect our training records, so that's why we always have to keep good records, and Diane Roberts did an excellent job on that, Brian. She's rock star. And so did Andy Brock at the Police Department. The Police, the PD does a great job on that. Um, let's see. On the audit, we scored 103 out of 100 points. I don't know how that works, but we got some extra credit, so. Debbie went to a class, and they gave us three extra points, so that was good. Our CERCA renewal took place in June, and we've asked for some additional quotes that we're waiting on. I don't even know all of them. I know that one of them was cybersecurity and excess crime. And really, that's about all I have for the Human Resources, unless somebody has any questions.
Great, sounds like you've been busy this year. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
How long have those four vacant full-time positions been open?
Two of them are really new, and two of them, well, one's the planner and the associate planner. We're just having such a hard time with those jobs, and we're not alone in that, but.
Does the 51 people leaving include lifeguards who went back to school and whatnot?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? I think that's it. Thanks for your time, Matt.
Thank you, guys.
All right, our next presenter is our Library Director, Isabella Sharpenstein.
Okay, I brought a little PowerPoint presentation with me. So I will start out with a little overview. So I will talk about our departments within the library. I will talk about our mission statement. Then I will move on to the 2021 statistics. There are just two that are really important. Then I'll talk about our successes and our current issues. So we have three major departments, and then I put the other stuff in other services. So we have the adult services, which includes our adult collection, our programs, which are like mostly hands-on events or classes, like the painting class we had last week, and then, of course, the public computers, which are always a really big hit for us. Then we have the teen services, which also includes the teen collection, programs for teens, and our new teen space that we're currently remodeling a little bit. We got a grant from Team Up for that, so we're getting new furniture, and it's going to be really great, hopefully. And also, the public computers are for the teens as well. And then we have our kids services, which includes our entire kids collection, our programs, the play area that we have, and the AWE computers, which are the computers that only have educational programs on it, and a few painting programs where the kids can go finger painting on it. And then the other services that we're providing include the interlibrary loan services, reference if people have questions, our copia, and once a week, we have a short tech help as well. So our mission statement, which I think is really important, is the Cortez Public Library's mission is to serve the community needs of a diverse population by providing access to resources that enrich and encourage lifelong learning. Our public service commitment to our diverse population includes people of all ages, education, races, ethnic origin, background, religious belief, occupation, gender identity, and economic status. Cortez Public Library has adopted the American Library Association's guidelines for public access and information, and those include the library bill of rights, the freedom to read, the freedom to view, as well as censorship. Now, I would like to talk a little bit about our statistics in 2021. We are always compared to Dolores and Mankas the most. However, if you can, or as you can see in the numbers, we're really more comparable with Durango. So we actually had more visits in 2021 than Durango. So we had about, I'll calculate on that, 30,946 more visits than Durango. However, as you can see in the circulation of physical items, so books and DVDs, Durango has quite a lot more than we do. That is basically explainable to the fact that people come to us for the public computers a lot more than just checking out books. So we actually had 105,064 less numbers of circulation than Durango. And now our successes. So we were able to expand our evening hours. We're open until 6:00, three days a week now. We were able to expand our programs now that we have a programming staff for adults, for teens, as well as for children. And then we were recently able to reopen on Saturdays, so that was basically along what the community survey said that we put out at the beginning of the year. So we were able to meet all the requests from the public, yeah, halfway through the year, basically. And then we do still have some issues. One of it is staffing, and that's mainly because we just need more staff because we have all these more visits than Durango has. I looked it up, and Durango has 21 full-time staff. They didn't say how much part-time staff they have, so. And then Bayfield has 15 full-time staff and five part-time staff with a much lower service population than we have, because we're not only serving the city, we're serving the county, we're serving neighboring states as well, so there's that where we just need more, more people in the building. And then the other one is our building, which is, I mean, the roof and the HVAC system are taking, getting taken care of, which I'm really, really happy about. And then we have an issue with the floors, which also includes the carpet, and just general space issues, because our collection just expands. It would be great to have a bigger event space, but yeah, that's just a wish list for the years to come, and that is all I have.
Oh, sorry. Isabel, I'm just wondering, you know, with the numbers of us getting as more visitors than Durango, if there's bigger grant opportunities available? Because I just briefly looked at Durango's library budget. I think it's like $2.8 million a year compared to our $400,000. So, yeah, is, does that open any doors for larger funding?
They, yeah, the grants that we've been looking at are mainly program-based rather than service-population-based. than service-population-based. I haven't seen any out there that are based on visits or service population. That doesn't mean that they aren't out there. I can check with Scott, our grant writer, and see if there's something where we can get money.
Last year, you asked the council to remove the library fines, and I just wanted to ask for an update on that. Are you, are people returning books? Like, how is that going?
Definitely. So they are returning books, they're really happy about it. We have also noticed an increase in donations as well, so. Because people don't have to be worried about paying their fines, they're just much more inclined to walk by our donation jar and put in a dollar or two, and it just adds up. And I think it also helps that we reduced our fees for copying and, well, we don't do faxing anymore, but yeah, for copying.
Did you mention how many employees you have at the library?
So we are now finally fully staffed. We have five full-time employees and five part-time employees.
Okay. Do you think Durango has like other stuff to check out, like those maker kits, or they might just have more variety, too?
I think so. They also have book club kits to check out, which we just recently adopted. So we've got those as well, and they have a library of things, which we also have adopted this summer. It hasn't gone very well so far. People, I don't think, know that they're there, so, but we have that as well. And maybe when I do the library report for next year, that's where those numbers come in, so hopefully we get an increase in that as well.
And you do check out pickleball equipment, right? Do you have anything else like that that you check out?
We have pickleball, we have yoga mats, we have lawn bowling equipment, we have board games, so we have quite a few bits and pieces.
Nice. Yeah, I meant to mention to you that Montezuma Inspired Coalition has a lot of outdoor stuff that people could check out, so maybe there's some room for promoting that as well within the library.
Yeah, we were actually thinking of maybe partnering up with them, because I think they're housed in the rec center. And so maybe we can build like a little bridge or something that we both can lend something out.
Great. All right, well, thank you so much, Isabel. The library is a vital asset to our community, and I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
All right, we'll invite for our next presentation our city clerk, Linda Smith. She's already over here.
Good evening, city council. As each of you know, the city clerk's office conducts the elections each year for the city. This year, we had the election for the, for the city council members. We had 10 citizens running for the four seats. We had a record number of votes that we received this year, 1692. It was just a wonderful election, and it went really smooth. I'm thankful to the county clerk for their, their coordination with us. We couldn't do it without them. And I, you know, I just like to remind everyone that it's just a great team for us to work with during the election time. She's the expert, and I rely on her to help me get through the process, since we don't do them every year like she does. I wanted to mention that the clerk's office handles 47 liquor licenses. That's how many, meaning we have currently. We also have six marijuana establishments in Cortez. Two of them have a cultivation grows with them, or two, we have two new. We had two that are still going from when they were medical licenses. We have one establishment that is approved but isn't built, and I understand they're working with the planning department on moving forward with that. So we could have seven eventually. One of the highlights for my job with the city is the wellness program. We began the wellness program with the city in 1992, and it's, that's when we began the process for it, and it's just grown so much over the last few years. And I just want to say thank you to council for supporting the program that has really brought in a lot of interaction with employees that they wouldn't normally have. We've been doing lots of fun activities this summer with our, you know, over at our rec center, we have that option of being inside to play the volleyball. We've been outside at the basketball courts, the pickleball courts. We had a city challenge this year, building between building. It was really, really fun. We had 53 employees participate, and a lot of employees just come to watch. It was just really awesome, and I can't say how much I appreciate that we're able to do that for our employees. We're going to go bowling in November, so if you guys want to come join us, it's really a fun activity, and people really enjoy doing that. Right now, we're codifying the land, the city code book, the blue book that you guys have. We have ordinances in that's being codified into our book for that, and the land use code we'll do at the end of the year, after some of these ordinances that we're working on now are ready to go, so that we can send them all in at once. We usually do that once a year, just for the cost. We also receive open records requests on occasion, and one of the fun things that we also do is the proclamations. Put them on really pretty good paper with our pretty seal, and people really do enjoy receiving those when we're able to do those. I just want to say, I think I have the best job in the city. So if you have any questions?
I really appreciate the transition to the new agenda program. I think it's really great to be able to like search the agendas as a PDF, look at just parts specifically. So I really appreciate your initiative in that.
Well, that came thanks to our city manager bringing that from Paige, and I was so thankful I got to go to Paige and work with his clerks. I'm more of a hands-on than read from a book, though we had a person work with us from Agenda Quick. Took us six months to get it all prepared, but it was really nice to go and be with them, and they let me do their agenda, which was really eye-opening for me to know, learn the shortcuts. So I'm really glad you guys like it. I love it. Planning and zoning is now using it, and there's so many more features that we have that we will embrace as time goes, and we feel confident, you know, that it's going to go well, so. But thank you.
And I think it's awesome that anybody can subscribe and get an email like, hey, an agenda's been added. It's just a really nice feature that the public can kind of be a little more engaged.
It is. And I'm, it'll be here forever, you know, so it's too bad we didn't do it a long time ago, but we're learning.
And then I'm, I'm really glad to, you have such a good relationship with the county. It's great that you guys can work together so well and kind of support each other. That's really important in our small community. And then I just want to commend you on the wellness program, too. It's, I always have fun coming to those, and so keep inviting us.
It is. I think it's just one of the best things we do for our employees. But of course, I've been involved in it for 30 years, so to me, it's really close to my heart, so I'm just glad we still offer it. So many other places started one, hospital, the school district, so many places, the county, and ours is still going. So, thank you.
Well, thanks for taking such good care of everyone. All right, we'll move on to our chief of police, Vern Knuckles.
All right, honorable mayor, city council. This is the update to city council for the Cortez Police Department. So the police department's mission is to enhance a partnership between businesses, citizens, and the police by providing responsive and professional services. Our vision is to deliver unparalleled service to our community through strengthened community relations and public trust, and our values are professionalism, integrity, compassion, and service. So here's kind of our organizational chart, just kind of broken down based off of our, kind of our budget line items for, for the agency. So I'll kind of go through these individually, and kind of what we've done this year, and kind of what we're looking to do in '23 and beyond. So police administration, the police administration division consists of the chief, the assistant chief, executive secretary, and the victim's advocate is in that division. Police administration's responsible for the overall management of the police department. We strive to ensure the department operates in accordance with the mission, vision, and core values, as well as the, the mission and vision of the city. Some of the accomplishments, I talked about the grants that we got at our, at our budget presentation, but I'll go over them again. We received a grant for $52,606 this year from Colorado Division of Criminal Justice, and that was to support our body worn camera program. When the state mandated the all law enforcement go-to-body-worn camera programs, they developed this grant to help agencies get into or start their program. We had already had a program, a pretty robust program, but were able to apply for this and, and get a one-time supplement that was pretty helpful this year. And then we got $8,798 from Colorado Post for Axon visual training. That's the visual goggles. We got two sets of them, which will allow officers to train in different virtual scenarios with each other. The current training that we have is, is kind of, it's, it's a kind of a two-dimensional. It shows up on a screen, and you just kind of interact with the screen. This is three-dimensional, so it's 360 degrees, and I'm really excited to get this, this going. And as I promised Saturday, when we get it up and running, I will bring it to council so you guys can, can try that out.
Thanks.
And then again, we got $2,014 from the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership. We get that grant every year. That grant's based on the number of certified officers that we have, and that grant pays for half of, of body armor, half the cost of the body armor. The agency picks up the other half. That typically gets us about five vests a year, and we are on a five-vest-a-year rotation. So that's working out pretty good. Some equipment that we have gotten, we received some mobile fingerprint identification devices. These are, these are a mobile fingerprint reader that, that officers can use on the street to identify people if they don't have an ID, or they don't want to give you their name or anything. So if their, if their fingerprints are in the national database, that will identify them, and I think that'll be pretty helpful. Again, Axon visual training headsets. The new vehicles, we're really excited about that. They come in '23, but that was done in '22, and I think that's really going to help the police department kind of catch up from, from the year that, that funding was freeze, and we didn't get vehicles, kind of put us behind a little bit, and I think that's going to help us catch up. And then a drone program. We got our pilots certified, so we're working through policy and procedure to get that up and running. '23 and beyond, you know, I think the agency has really good community engagement. We want to continue that. I, I feel we're also very transparent. We're also, you know, going to continue to be as transparent as possible, you know, work, work on improving anywhere we can with that. Bolster community confidence, improve community relationships. We'll continue to seek grant opportunities to help, you know, you know, help save money for the community. We want to improve technology. Some of the things that I'm looking for, for '23 would be nice, but it might be a beyond or mobile data terminals in the, in the police vehicles. Hopefully, you know, to give some of that critical information to the officers in their car at their fingertips, relieve a little bit of pressure on our dispatch center, and hopefully keep maybe officers out on the street so they don't have to return to the office just to do reports all the time. And digital forensic capabilities I'm looking at for the future. There's so much crime being committed on computers, cell phones. I think that's just one of those areas in investigations that we need to move towards. E-bikes, you know, kind of strengthen our bike patrol program with e-bikes. We wouldn't be limited to the park. I mean, those things will go 35 miles an hour. They can go all the way across town, just like a patrol car. So they could be out in the community on bikes and still get to the other end of town in a reasonable amount of time to respond to other calls, and I think that would be a pretty good program. And then agency accreditation through CSAT. Our patrol division, the patrol division's the front line in the fight against crime and keeping our community safe. It's the most visible representation of the, of the police department. That's who people see every day out on the street. They're in uniforms, they're in marked cars, and they are the face of the agency. They, they're the first responders to all criminal problems and emergencies, and a lot of times, they are the first people that, they are people that will seek them out for information about the community. Tourists, you know, will, will get officers, just ask, you know, where to go, where's a good place to eat, very visible. Some accomplishments there was our Axon body worn camera and TASER 7 upgrade. That was huge for, for the agency. We were really behind with that technology, and, and I really appreciate council approving that when you did. That program is up and going completely in '22. We transitioned from Glock 40s to the SIG 9mm. The ammunition's cheaper, and the 9mm is just easier. There's less recoil. With less recoil, there's less chance of, of accidents, you know, in a critical situation. You're not missing shots, so kind of the thoughts around that. We also acquired RMRs, or ruggedized miniature reflex sights. They go on, they're a little dot that helps focus and, 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 you know, improve your, your aim and accuracy. The vehicle leased, again, I mentioned that before, that's huge for the patrol division. I was able to purchase new ballistic helmets for all certified officers. And that was huge. The helmets that we had, one, we didn't have enough for everybody, but the helmets we had were very old. And then along with that, I was able to purchase Peltor noise-canceling headsets with push-to-talk capabilities for our radios. So the radio goes into the headset. So in critical situations, if, if they can get those on, it's good for protecting their hearing. And then patrol rifle suppressors, and again, that is just for safety and hearing. If something has to happen, active shooter in a, in a building, those are very loud, and you can damage hearing, and suppressors are, are for hearing. '23 and beyond provide the data mobile terminals, purchase the e-bikes. I'd like to add an additional school resource officer with the dare kind of going away. Carla is stepping in. She's going to take over the new NOVA program, and she's acting as, as the school resource officer. But we have a lot of schools for one school resource officer. So I'd like to look at adding another school resource officer, either internally or, you know, or another way. I'd like to certify another drone pilot, and I, I want to get our, our officers trained and employ those mobile fingerprint identification devices. And then I still would like to get exterior ballistic vests that have rifle plates for larger caliber rifles to protect the officers. Investigations, their responsibility is to provide professional investigations within the city. Their main responsibility are felony-level crimes, homicide, sexual assault, robberies, burglaries, fraud, computer crimes, narcotics, is kind of what they get into. They upgraded their interview room recording system to the Axon interview, which was huge, and that was all part of the Axon package, and again, I thank council for that. They got two new detectives assigned in, in rotating positions, and we got them through the new criminal investigation. the new Criminal Investigation Course, so they're, they're halfway there. They also transitioned to the nine millimeters and got the RMR sites. Vehicle lease was good for them as well, and they also got the ballistic helmets and the, and the Peltor hearing protection. Twenty-three, send the two new detectives to the homicide and death investigation course, and that should get them completely trained for that position. Purchase a new photo lineup program for the Division, actually for the Agency. The Division will hold it, but Patrolmen use photo lineup as well. Implement a criminal analyst digital forensic position, enhance our divis, our digital forensic investigation capabilities. And then Investigations wants to develop a cellphone social media application, safety presentation for school-aged kids and parents, and, and kind of get in front of kids and parents on, on the dangers of cell phones and how you can get in trouble with social media, and some of the apps that are, kids know that parents don't, that are not real good. And then just continue to review technology and improvement and, and improve. The Dispatch Center is our public safety answer point for the Twenty-Second Judicial District, so that's Dolores County, Montezuma County, all the municipalities, unincorporated areas of Montezuma. They're a full-service communication center in answering nine-one-one calls and, and, and dispatching for law enforcement, fire and EMS. Accomplishments, upgraded the, the main radios in the Dispatch Center. They installed an Alias Manager, which allows the Dispatch Center to see who pushes an emergency, their emergency buttons on their radios. Before, it would just show a serial number. With this, it shows who the radio is assigned to. So if you pushed it before, they had to do a roll call through everybody to find it. Now they know Chief Knuckles pushed his emergency button, and you need to turn it off. So that, that, that saves a lot of time and rate, and air, airtime. Certified One Dispatcher is an AppCo instructor, so that dispatcher can teach the AppCo, EMD, and other dispatching courses. And then we certified two dispatchers as trainers for new dispatchers coming in. And we've implemented a succession program, a leadership succession program, because Lori is about four years, she said, and so we need to start looking, looking at replacing her and getting somebody trained up. Twenty-three and beyond, new nine-one-one phone system, which we're in talks with the nine-one-one Authority Board, and am I going wrong? I'm probably. AppCo Intellicom Guard Guide Card System, which prompts dispatchers to ask certain questions during emergencies. Send, rotate dispatchers through the AppCo Conference and implement a day-and-night supervisor for our shifts, we currently don't have that. Animal Shelter, they provide services for lost, abandoned, surrendered pets, licensing, microchipping, and adoption services for the animals in, in our community. Their accomplishments, they replaced some cabinets that were old with waterproof cabinets, hosted a spay-neuter clinic that was very successful, adopted out a hundred and seventy-four pets, two hundred and six reclaimed, so owners coming back and getting their animals, and transferred a hundred and twenty-eight pets out of the area to avoid euthanization. Twenty-three and beyond, they want to replace their animal wash tub and surround, they need a septic pump grinder, replace the remainder of the old cabinetry with waterproof. As successful as the spay-neuter clinic, they want to add a, a second one to help try to get animals spayed and neutered, and they want to add in one or two vaccination clinics for the community and attract and maintain part-time employees. Support Services, Records and Evidence. So some of the accomplishments for Records, they, they processed to date one thousand six hundred and sixty-one case reports, and they have attended sex offender registration training, which was well-received by them. Evidence, we've, we conducted an annual evidence audit and reconciled all deficiencies or discrepancies, so a hundred percent on evidence in there, which is a good thing. Disposed of and removed fifteen hundred and twenty pieces of evidence, so those were either ordered destroyed by the court or turned back to owners, but we got it out of our custody, and that's a good thing. Twenty-three and beyond, attend Cora Training for Records and receive some additional sex offender registration training. Evidence, continue to disposition evidence and try to get our inventory down and develop measures to limit the discrepancies that were found during the audit this year. All right, here are just some statistics, I was going to just throw those up for you guys to look at while you, and if you had any questions, you could ask me now.
First of all, I just want to say that it's really inspirational, I like the twenty and twenty-three and beyond, it just, to me, shows that we're moving forward with a lot of things, and it's, you know, progressive in that sense that we're, you know, growing. And I just had a question about the SROs, where do we stand in terms of how many SROs we have in the school systems?
So currently, we have one SRO for all the schools, and that's why I want to start looking at. And, I mean, technically, before, we had one SRO and a Dare, so we're not down an SRO, but our Dare Officer Vern Rucker, he used to help out in the elementary schools, or he would be there teaching Dare. And, I mean, really, like an SRO, an officer in the school while he's teaching Dare. So when we lost Dare, and we just have Carla as our SRO, so I would like to look at another SRO for the elementary schools and kind of go back to the way it was. Vern kind of looked at, or took care of the elementary schools, and then Jerry Sam took care of the high school and the junior high, and so.
I, I was going to ask a question kind of following that, does the schools offer or want any buy-in for a School Resource Officer?
So I don't know exactly what it is, but I believe the school district pays a small portion of the SRO wage, but I, I don't know what that is.
And I had one more question, do we have an SRT team, a SWAT team?
We don't.
Okay.
So, no, my thought was to train everybody, we're small, and we don't have a lot of, and the training requirements for liability are huge within SRT, so my thinking was train everybody in the basic tactics, and then we just have in-house training, we don't have a team, but we know how to act as a team.
Hi Chief, I'm interested in kind of a breakdown in the types of crime this year versus years past, and sort of any patterns that you've, you've noticed?
Well, an obvious one would be our narcotics, that's, that's a huge one, and, and fentanyl. Back when Dennis and I were in the task force, you know, we're coming out of marijuana into meth, and meth was just crazy taken off, and we've kind of come, we still have methamphetamine, but fentanyl is now the, the one that's taken off. I mean, a hundred and six thousand pills of fentanyl, that's huge, so. Some of the other stuff, like homicides, that, that's, that's kind of up and down. You might have none for a couple of years, and you might have one or two another year, so there's no, nothing like that. DUIs, some of the, the crimes like that are kind of skewed because we really pulled back during COVID, we didn't do a lot of proactive policing, traffic stops and stuff like that, we would respond to calls for service, or if there was a driver that was so all over the road, they would, they would initiate that stop. So we're kind of, kind of skewed there a little bit compared to this year. But I think overall, there's in, a slight increase in about everything. But we could put something together more thorough if, if that would, if that would be something Council would like to see.
Yeah, I know, me personally, I think that would be helpful, and also helpful with all of the, the requests for updating technology and everything else, just to sort of have an idea of what the data is showing is happening in the community.
Okay.
And then, I guess, just an ignorance question, what, what are the main uses of the drones?
So they would be, you, you could use them for a lot of different things. Our main purpose would be at-risk adults that wander off, a lot of times you can get a drone, and you can cover a lot of areas, especially south of town, down in, towards the, is it Hawkins on that side? Hawkins, yeah. Yeah, we've had, we've had people go down in there, and it takes a lot of man-hours down there walking around. You could fly a zone, a drone. Criminals that hide from us, we can use it for that as well. And then, you know, you can use it for surveillance, I mean, there's a lot that goes with that, and you would have to have, you would have to obtain a search warrant and get the proper approval, but you could, you could use it for stuff like that.
Chief, I have a question. What would you say, what would be the percentage of your calls that would involve domestic violence and abuse?
I don't have an exact percentage, but it's relatively high.
And I guess, and those situations are the only options, like the women's, and, like referring people to the Women's and Children's Shelter?
That, that is an option. Have one of the part, well, you know, if, if there's, if there's signs that a crime has been committed in Colorado, it's a mandatory arrest. So if, if there's signs that the man or woman was struck by the other, there would be an arrest made, and then that person could stay home because the, the aggressor has been removed. But if there's no signs, you, we always try to, you know, ask if somebody can leave and go, you know, just kind of separate if there are no signs of violence, no crime committed.
I saw the article about the two thousand eighteen, like marijuana bust, that your department's getting money for that?
Yes, we did.
Okay, is that, I guess, is that just go back into the general fund, or is that going to be used? I guess, I'm just curious.
So based on the, the rules of the federal seizure, it cannot go into the general fund, so it come in, and it's, Kelly put it into a line item that we can pull out of, and that money cannot be used to supplement or reduce an agency's budget. It has to be an addition to a budget in order for you to get it. And then there are pretty strict guidelines on what it can be used for, training, equipment, you can use it for buy money and things like that. Can't use it for employees, but, yeah, we did, it was forty-two thousand and some change that we ended up getting.
Well, good job.
Thank you.
Well, and I just want to say thank you to you and your staff, and I think you probably worked with a lot of other police in the area, because I think a lot of those fentanyl pills came from my neighbor, and I, and we all appreciate having that safety now in the neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
All right, I think that's all I have. Thanks so much, Chief Knuckles, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you, Council.
All right, we'll move on to our Director of General Services, Rick Smith.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I apologize, this is kind of a repeat of what you got to hear Saturday. But as you know, General Services is basically a department that supports most of the other departments within the city. And under administration, just some general notes here, purchase of vehicles and equipments continue to be a challenge for the city. The availability of long-term and long-term deliveries has made it difficult to replenish the city fleet. It's also impacting some of our city capital projects, it's making it tougher to get major components in, to get things done in a timely fashion. Lead times are now considered in months instead of weeks. And of course, as we all live through inflation and the cost increases, that's also impacting the city on the items that we, as a city, consume. But one of the highlights I'd like to point to is the solar system here at City Hall. There's actually two systems on there, a fourteen KW and an eighty-eight KW system. Those create a hundred and two point two KW, and City Hall is on a net metering program. The good news is that that'll be, the cost to, for that equipment will be fully satisfied in twenty-twenty-four. That started in twenty-seventeen. Year-to-date, that system has generated two hundred and sixty-four million watt-hours of electricity to offset the cost here at the, at City Hall. One of the projects that we've talked about off and on is a jury room, and I intend on taking that to City Council for award, the first meeting in October. Unfortunately, the cost came in a little bit higher than what we had budgeted, I think the bid was a hundred and eighty-one thousand. For example, just to illustrate, interior doors, like to match up the aesthetics of City Hall, those are twenty-week delivery now for that project, so we will probably be delaying notice to proceed to time out with some of these components and get that project completed in twenty-twenty-three. Some good news for the library, tonight we'll be presenting to you the commodities for the HVAC project, and talking to the engineers, they're now saying that we may be able to get that equipment in, in twenty-eight weeks, which would move that project from a fall project to possibly a late spring project. We don't want to do it in the middle of the summer because of the need for cooling. Same problem with the Service Center HVAC. The Equipment Fund has been seeing increases for vehicles and equipment, and fleet discounts in some cases are nonexistent, and has forced the city in some cases to compete at the retail level for pricing of the, of the vehicles. And as you're aware, the Cortez Community Network continues to the process of the RFP. Building maintenance, we asked for a person, in this budget was not approved, but I'd just leave Council that we got to maintain what we have, and for example, this building, City Hall, triple the square footage of our, of our old City Hall, and yet we're still with the same number of people. It's starting to impact our ability to keep our city facilities up and preventing maintenance. The shop rotary, that's our city fleet, we have a hundred and sixty vehicles that we maintain and equipment. Last year, they drove about six, sixty-four thousand, excuse me, four hundred and sixty-four thousand miles, almost a half a million miles within the city and, and stuff conducting the city business. In doing that, we used up about an average of sixty-four thousand gallons of unleaded and diesel a year. And the four main line items that impact that budget, of course, are fuel, oil, we're seeing a twenty percent increase, tires. Oil, we're seeing a twenty percent increase. Tires, fifteen to twenty-five percent. And of course, the necessary replacement parts to fix stuff, we're seeing as high as twenty-five percent. So really, that's about all I have to present. If you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rick. All right, and then our last staff director presentation is Finance, Kelly Kosky.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'd like to talk to you about the Finance Department. Like to talk about what our purpose is, who we are, what we've accomplished, where we are going, and what we need. The Finance Department manages all of the city's finances. This includes audit, budget, investments, payroll, sales tax, accounts receivable, accounts payable, grant management, and utility management. We are a group of highly skilled, competent, and very dedicated and resilient professionals. We have a backlog of annual audits, as you know. In the past fourteen months, we've completed the 2017 through the 2019 audit work. The 2017 audit opinion is complete and we have a draft of the 2018 audit opinion now. The auditors are starting to work on the 2019 audit opinion and work has already begun on the 2020 audit. We've updated financial policy, which had not been done since 2013. We've added a grant administrator to the staff. He's been working diligently to create additional revenue streams for the departments that are woefully behind on infrastructure maintenance, in addition to managing the ARPA funding that we already have. He's working very hard to build and repair relationships that we need with our important stakeholders. The IT Department is also now under the Finance Department purview. Their largest project that they've accomplished this year was a new phone system. We moved to a cloud-based voice-over-IP phone system. That was for every phone in every building of the entire city of Cortez. This was very time-consuming, a pretty large project for IT and the Finance Director. It took us months to implement that move to the voice-over-IP. And at the end of it, we're all a little sad that we didn't get to have our team meeting with Avaya every week. They were really great. We are also in the process of updating our webpage. That has been a very large project for the entire leadership team. There's a lot of work on the old webpage to even be able to move forward to the new webpage. So we're hoping that we'll be able to roll that out very soon. Looking forward to that. That should be really exciting. Where are we going? The Finance Department is striving to arrive at normal operations. The backlog of audits has been a crushing workload, taken on without complaint by employees who also have daily, weekly, and monthly tasks to complete. We continue to look for more efficient ways to complete our day-to-day operations. One example is implementing electronic vendor payments, which we're hoping to be able to accomplish within the next month. This not only will increase our efficiency, but it will also reduce costs to the city for the massive amount of expensive checks that we print on a weekly basis. So what do we need? Well, the Finance Department doesn't need more money. I'm bet you're glad to hear that, right? We've actually reduced our budget from 2022. We need things that money can't buy. We need council and the public to understand that the Finance Department is spread very, very thin. We are operating at our very maximum capacity right now. We ask for your support and patience while we continue to work through this very stressful and challenging time. We also ask that council be diligent in ensuring that our community partners are as accountable and transparent as we are required to be. Doing this will ensure that all of us are working together toward the common goal of making the city of Cortez a better place to live and work. I'd also like to note, there is now the link for the 2023 proposed budget, which is available out on the city webpage. It does also have the same "join the conversation" option at the very bottom of the page, where the public can input comments about the proposed budget. And I'd just like to give a big thank you to all of you for giving up your Saturday. It was a long day. It was a beautiful day. We all wanted to be outside, but we, you really did dig in and spend the work and the time that was needed for that twenty-three proposed budget. We really do appreciate that. Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you to the, to you and to the entire Finance Team. I don't know if the entire community recognizes the amount of work that doing three audits in a year is. But anyone who does audits and auditing is part of their regular job, it is a huge, huge undertaking. And we're, we're really happy to have you onboard and to be moving in the right direction there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to piggyback off Robert, I also want to say thank you. And just a general comment to Drew or whoever would take this on. I think it would be great to take some of these big accomplishments and put them out on our social media or online where people could see where their taxpayer dollars are going. And projects in the past that have, are now successful, like the solar panels and getting this far with the budget.
Yeah, I agree with you, Councilmember. You know, we do our best to get some things out. To be quite honest, it's a little bit hard for us to brag. But honestly, just like Kelly said, a lot of it is, we're just so busy doing that it's hard to get that passed. But your, your point is well-taken.
All right, thank you so much for your hard work. And I, I hope your staff knows how much we, we really appreciate you all.
Thank you very much. I'll be sure to pass that along to them. Thank you.
All right, with that, we're done with our presentations by department heads. We'll move on to general council discussion. Do any council members have a topic or anything they'd like to bring up or share? All right. Okay, so then we'll adjourn this meeting. Oh, sorry, David. Oh, microphone.
I believe our next meeting is a conflict with the election.
Oh, our, our meeting in November?
Yeah.
Our first meeting in November?
I'm sorry, yes, November. So do we, have we made the decision on that or considered that?
Um, I, yeah, I was made aware that our first November meeting is on Election Day. And so I brought it up to our city manager and he's.
Mayor and Council, we're checking on that and trying to come up some good counsel for you. We have a little bit of time to maneuver and make the decision on that. But nowadays, where everything's mail-in ballot, so it's not like we're standing in line to cast a vote. Generally, that Election Day is now where ballots are collected and counted. So we will try to get a little more information for you on what we think is good counsel there, but just put that thought in your head.
Thank you.
Will Linda be engaged at all in that one? That's just purely the county, right? County court? Yeah.
I guess, if anything, could we keep that meeting short?
Oh, I'm all about keeping meetings short, Mayor.
Okay.
We, we will come up with some good, good discussion for you in the future, so.
Okay. Okay, all right. With that, we'll adjourn this meeting and we'll start our regular session at seven-thirty PM.
Thanks.